Welcome. To the regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Trustees, my name is Speaker Colley, December thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two, twenty-three, I will call the meeting to order, and join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I said, it's great.
My pledge of allegiance is to the United States of America, to the Republic, to the Constitution, and to the Constitution itself.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Make a motion to approve the agenda.
May I second that?
A motion and a second to approve the agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed same sign, motion carried. Consent agenda. Do you include the minutes of the November eighth, two thousand twenty-three District Board meeting? To repeal the policy four dash three hundred, nebuchism? And repeal policy four dash eighteen hundred, advanced study outside employment, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I so move to approve the consent agenda as this.
So I have a second.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, all in favor signify by saying aye, aye, opposed same sign, that motion carries, do we have any public comment? Thank you. We do have a public comment. Would the speaker please step to the podium? Please state your name.
Good afternoon, Zach Van Heimer, founder and chairman of AllQuest 3D. That was my entrance music, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here with you, as always, we love coming out here. I want to give a quick update on what AllQuest is doing and where we're headed. So I'm a bit rushed because I just got here from Newport News, Virginia, a few hours ago, where we dedicated our most recent two homes that we printed with Habitat for Humanity. These, and we got to meet the owners, so the homeowners have taken possession of those homes as of yesterday, and so those homes are finished, I'd love to show anyone pictures and video here later, but it was a wonderful ceremony. We love partnering with Habitat, and we told the whole crowd how we'll be partnering with Habitat here in Greeley coming up next year. So that was a wonderful time, and what we're doing right now in Greeley is, I just toured our facility with you guys over in the Greeley campus. In the next couple of weeks, we're going to start printing infrastructure. So we're printing curb structures and planters, and then we're working with, the Public Works Department are going to come in in January, we're going to print about six different prototypes, they're going to choose which ones they like the best, and then they're going to tell us we need X amount of these for production next year, and those are going to start getting installed in, I believe, in March throughout downtown Greeley. And then right around the end of March, early April, depending on weather, when it warms up here, we're going to start printing the first fifteen homes that we're going to be doing with Habitat for Humanity here in Weld County, which is very, very exciting. Also, by the end of January, we will have six permanent employees here. They're all in at flux right now, celebrating the holidays where they are, and then they're going to be here in January, and we're going to be increasing that over the course of next year, and we want to be doing that specifically with the students that go through the program at Ames. So again, this is the first of its kind training curriculum for 3D printing, that we're going to get started here with you in the spring semester, I believe. And as we said before, anyone that goes through that program, whenever we're hiring, gets priority. So if they've gone through that program and we're hiring, they're the ones we're going to hire. So we're growing rapidly, we've got lots of work ahead of us, and the big piece of this that I don't think the rest of the world understands just yet is the opportunity for workforce development that's going to grow out of this program. Hundreds of jobs are going to be created right here in Weld County, but it's going to grow far beyond that. This is the first of its kind program that's taking place anywhere for 3D concrete printing. So we're especially proud of that, we're very much looking forward to continuing our relationship with Ames and everybody that we've been working with so far, and we're very excited for the future. We know that we can act as a group to, as a catalyst to bring in other companies and other groups to come here and work directly with Ames, and that's what we want to do with business incubation as well as workforce development. So thank you so much for the consideration, and we are very excited for the future.
Thank you very much, Zach, appreciate the comments. Okay. Next on the agenda is presentation from guests and representatives to the board. First is Excellence at Ames, Kelly Jackson, Executive Director of the Foundation, would you come forward, please?
Shortest, I don't think this goes low enough. Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, trustees, Dr. Rothimer, and audience colleagues. I am going to put in a disclaimer, this student's full journey can be found on the Foundation's webpage and in our newsletter, you are going to get today's truncated version, but it's going to be moving. My counselor only passed me because she didn't want me to be a sixteen-year-old eighth grader. It makes me cry thinking of that. But what brings me joy is knowing that the Foundation often supports these individuals to gain the success for where they are today. Can you imagine hearing this as a young person and then working your blankety-blank tail off to overcome this hurdle? And many others, not just that, sadly, this is true, and it was a reality for today's alumna. It never ceases to amaze me how spectacular these Ames students are and the tenacity they embrace to better their lives. It brings me joy to hear how Ames has been a beneficial catalyst for success, and we're all part of that. Today, I have the privilege of introducing Misty Treffrey, who is a powerful superwoman. She didn't really want to embrace the superwoman Kate, but she really is one, when you hear her story, you will believe that. She is faster than a speeding bullet, more powerful than a locomotive, and able to leap tall buildings in a single bound.
As long as our three feet are lowered.
Please give me a warm welcome to Misty Treffrey, Ames alumna two thousand twelve, who will share how she moved from hardship into becoming a helping hand. Misty?
So I'm going to apologize, because when I sat down yesterday to read the story in which was printed, I could not put it into words that would have allowed me to be here for less than thirty minutes, as I promised, Kelly, just kidding, ten minutes. So you're going to get a little bit of a different version today, because, you know, I'm a little bit of an academic, and I remember classes, I'm going to give you a different version of that story that is more focused and centered on Ames, which is why I'm here today. There are many faces in the audience that I'd like to just take a moment to thank. Shannon McCaslin, I saw Mary earlier today, but I'm not sure she's here in the audience. Janet Chase, I saw Patty Schultz earlier too, but I'm not sure she's in the audience. Heather, for the Executive Director of Loveland Ames, and I'd also like to thank Kelly, because the support extended beyond my academics, as I spoke with Kelly just a little bit ago, she's like, I'll stand next to you, so you have somebody right there, so I appreciate the support. Also, community-wise, I'd like to thank Janine Tresswell, who's been an unofficial mentor of mine for many years. John Hayfley and I have got to know each other, I'd like to thank my husband, who's in the audience next to some amazing colleagues I have, a Project Self-Sufficiency, who carved time out of their day to be here and support me. Mr. O'Hara, I wouldn't be here today either with the MCB UNC background if it wasn't for some of those conversations we had in your office while I was a work-study for the dean's office, so thank you so very much, appreciate it. I'm going to start off with stats. According to the National Education Center for Statistics, non-traditional students are more than twice as likely to drop out within their first year versus their traditional counterparts, this is sixteen versus thirty-eight percent. Non-traditional status refers to the presence of one or more non-traditional characteristics, including delayed enrollment, part-time attendance, being independent, working full-time while enrolled, having children, being a single parent, or being a recipient of a GED or high school completion certificate. Non-traditional student, as we refer to them in higher education, is an at-risk student. I was an at-risk student, that status followed me from my at-risk youth status. Being born into poverty, I was born at risk, none of these factors were of my choosing, but like many who I work with, it was up to me to overcome. My last attempt in higher education, my commitment to myself was, I'm going to do it, because if not, I'm going to have to become a trophy wife, and if you know me, that's not, that was tougher than becoming an academic. And I'm not just talking about hours at the gym, I'm talking about just sitting there and looking pretty, because it's hard for me to keep my mouth shut, I bite a hole in my lip. So in two thousand and eight, I came here with the intent of finishing, I wasn't in, I had no idea what the journey was going to be like, all I knew is at the end of it, I'd get a diploma, and that's what I was here for. My GPA when I returned was a one point five GPA. Now, I will also share with you, in the seventh grade, I had straight Fs on my report card, and that was not for fantastic. I overcame. I put in all the hard work, as I sat there in front of the probation advisor who took all the students that were on academic probation, Marty Demarest said to me, it's not about where you start, it's about where you end up that matters. And I invited her to every red carpet event that I held there when I was the advisor of Women in Transition Together, because that message needed to be heard over and over, and even I myself needed to hear that. Find yourself at Ames, I believe was the tagline, either when I started or at some point while I was there, and that is just what I did. I became a better photographer through my photography, lighting, and graphic design classes at Ames. I first became aware of where I now work due to a classmate who was a Project Self-Sufficiency participant, and I kept an eye on that program as I went through my academics. I became a trio student. There, I didn't get financial assistance, and I was okay with that, what I got was the additional support, it was mandatory to see my advisor twice a month and check in, and that is just what I needed. Also too, I also needed some extra tutoring time for math, and Ms. Julie Hopkins, who was my tutor, and now teaching math, and I'm so excited that she is reaching more students through her encouraging ways. My first job here in higher ed as a work-study was in the recruiting department. I'll tell you what, that introduced me to everybody from facilities all the way to the top, the president's office, and I got great support from working with these individuals. I'm going to apologize, I think it's Dan, the security guy, who was such a friendly face to see today, I said, oh my gosh, can we get a selfie, I'm so excited to see you, because I saw, I was here late at night after dark, sometimes not arriving to my home in Windsor till nine-thirty, ten o'clock at night, after leaving the house at seven in the morning. I was introduced to the Striker Leadership Program at UNC, which I am proud to say, after my first year at UNC, I became a striker sister, and I have built great relationships with those individuals, there were a hundred of us, and they figured out a way to make sure that we had community. WIT, Women in Transition, it's a student organization that I had started to help students, mainly women, that's what our focus was, that's what I knew, help them succeed through their academics. Thanks to my job in the admissions department, I got to kind of see that we had an eighty-five percent success rate, and that meant completing their degree at Ames or transferring on to a four-year degree. Some of these women are doing some extraordinary things, my first president of WIT is now the president of Hispanic Women of Weld County, and a phenomenal mother of four. My academic path, I discovered what I wanted to be when I grew up, and you know what, I'm still on that path too. But I learned from one of the individuals that I would get to see how she interacted with students, Polly Yanis, who was the director of advising, I went into her office one day and I said, I must know what degrees you got, and she told me, a business, and she had business degrees, a degree in education, and I said, that's it, I'm going to continue, I was already on my business degree, I knew I was graduating Ames and I was going to go off to UNC to get my degree in business, now I knew what my master's was going to be. And I found during my time here at Ames, my love for helping others navigate higher education, from discovering our programs, the degree opportunities that led to the career paths in which they wanted to do, to graduation and beyond. I was given nuggets of hope on my journey here to higher education, and I struck gold when I came to Ames and received the support. Without Ames, and not... Without Ames, I would not have two other diplomas on my wall. Ames was a great bridge to UNC and more of what is to be. As I get ready to start looking at PhD programs, I feel like I'm starting all over again, because it's a different beast than coming to community college or doing the undergrad. But increasing access increases opportunities, and I could not stand in front of these Board of Trustees today and ask you if you would consider something. When I was here as a student, there was a daycare, and it was shut down, and I don't know why, the policy is all around that or anything like that, so if it's not a reality, I totally get it, but I would love to ask if it could be considered to bring back a childcare facility. The last I knew is we had nineteen new daycare centers open in Weld County, but eighteen of them closed, so that means we're just one ahead. And as a program advisor at Project Self-Sufficiency, I do see the impact of daycare in helping moms become parents, not just moms, become more successful. I want to thank each of you, because I know you're some amazing community leaders, and you've come to Ames to help make it better, and I'll tell you what, today, I physically got to see the better, and I'm so excited, because I know Janine coming in, John coming in, to see them continue their leadership. I never want to see any of you great leaders leave our community, so no matter what you do, please continue to lead in whatever capacity you're in, and thank you so much for taking the time. Kelly, thank you for being here as a stand-in support, thank you for listening to me today, I know I'm not the only story, there are many more, and I appreciate everybody's time today. Was I supposed to bring gifts?
You didn't tell her?
Thank you so much.
Misty, thank you. On behalf of the Board of Trustees, I want to thank you for being here and sharing your story, this is, this is why we're here, you validate what we do, and hearing these stories month after month, people coming in here, telling us their stories, telling us how Ames helped them succeed is exactly what we want to hear, what we need to hear for us to keep doing what we're doing. So again, thank you, this is small, little gift, appreciation on behalf of us, but best of luck to you and your future endeavors, and any requests you have, I'm sure that Kelly would help you channel those in the right direction.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Still my favorite part of the meeting, by far. Okay, next, for representatives to the board and presentations, we have the three representatives to the board here, Student Government Association, Jared, Jared Toledo. I reported to us on the Student Government Association.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of the board, cabinet members, Chair Oxiger, Dr. Rothimer, appreciate being able to share this time with you. This semester has really been great, and it's kind of hard to believe that fall semester is already over. CAP, they've really been wrapping up this year, planning for their spring events, they've had their planning meeting, and most of their events are already planned, they're just kind of fine-tuning everything, but we really look forward to winter break, but we're also looking forward to the spring semester. Myself in collaboration with CAP, coming up in January, we're going to be hosting, called the Parent Palooza Pizza Party, where we can try to get students and their parents, or student parents and their children, to come together, meet each other, kind of gain a sense of community among student parents, myself as a student parent, I'm going to be there, my son's going to be there. It's just going to be a fun time, we're going to have pizza, games, and just try to connect with each other. And some of the stuff that SGA has been working on, that's kind of our big thing right now is, the Student Government Vice President of Student Engagement, Inclusion, and Success, she has gathered all of her submissions for the Ames Little Book of Recovery, and the projections of that being published and distributed is going to be coming up in the spring semester as well. And then our Vice President, or Student Government Vice President for Academic Affairs, he started, we've been calling them public office hours, where we sit in the halls so we could have student government be visible to the students, and we plan to have more of them in each of the buildings at the Greeley campus, but we also extend our reach with our town halls. Myself, I did a town hall on Windsor campus, but we're trying to have each one of our members extend our reach to the other campuses, to really get everybody's voice involved. And then also myself, as the Student Government President, I've met with, and I'm collaborating with John Deschand, and he's a school certifying official, and we're really going to be working on ways to engage and create a sense of community through veteran students. Myself as a veteran, I would kind of want, the goal right now is to create kind of like an affinity group to get a space for veteran students, so we could, ideally, I would like to have a peer mentor kind of thing, to where students who are farther ahead in the college journey can kind of teach the other students coming in to how to navigate everything. Also, the Fall Graduate Dinner had just passed, and that was organized by Student Life, it was a success, we drew in a crowd of two hundred and six attendees. Taylor from Markham, she had a photo booth set up, so students and their families, they could really get pictures, capture the memories of that pretty awesome event, from what I've heard of, because students have been coming up to telling me how impressed they were, they really thought like how nice the event was, and a lot of them said how good the food was, which was catered by Coral Williams. There was toast by trustee Wendell, Dean McCaslin, and Dr. Bukowski, and just toast and cheers to really celebrate the night. But with that being said, I appreciate your time, and are there any questions?
Any questions, Jared? I got a, I got a comment, Jared, I really appreciate what you're trying to do for events. We used to have a center here on campus for vets, it was very, very well-received, a lot of vets here used it, used it regularly. I, I went to several events with the veterans, and I used to, I remember going to the coining ceremony that they had every year, that meant a huge, a whole lot to the veterans that came to that and participated in that, they really felt recognized here on campus. So the fact that you're working on that and trying to get something going again, I think is absolutely awesome, so I thank you for that, and I hope we get that done.
I really appreciate it, and, but thank you for this opportunity to present, and I hope you all have a great break and enjoy the holidays, and thank you very much, Lyle, for leading the board and everything, I'm very happy that I've been able to be here to present.
My pleasure.
Thank you.
Okay, next, Ames Faculty Association, Julie Weingard. Welcome, Julia.
Well, it's always a pleasure to be here, you know, I just love this so much, and it's exciting for me to be able to give the last presentation of the two thousand twenty-three year, all right, which to me has gone by so fast, I don't know about you all, but I was like, what was that, a weekend, two thousand twenty-three, okay? All right, well, let me get started here, Chair Oxiger, members of the board, Dr. Rothimer, and colleagues, good afternoon and happy holidays, everybody. All right, so we have been, again, keeping it extremely busy, all right, for our faculty, and I am excited to dive into what we've been doing. Let's start off with community involvement, so we have Dr. Darlene Half, now she is a part-time behavioral science professor, but she's also an epidemiologist and biostatician, and she gave a very intriguing talk about the various responses of COVID-19 on the state and local level. Now, she did this on the Windsor campus for political science students, but the community was invited as well. So I thought about this, and I thought, well, anything, I think, on the COVID-19 to give us further understanding, knowledge is really, really important. So what I think is important is that the political science can actually enhance our understanding of the political, social, and economic implications of the pandemic and inform policymakers on a large variety of key issues, so I felt like Darlene did a great job in creating a huge impact on giving us that important piece of information. Now, it seems like every time I come up here and I do the BOT report, we hear Jennifer Bailey, all right, so Jennifer Bailey really just goes all out for her students at Ames, and she has done it once again by creating an Android at Ames event on the Loveland campus. Now, Jennifer will sometimes, well, every time I've talked about her, she's usually pairing with some group, so she was able to pair with the Google Development Group for this with students, and to help them increase their knowledge and understanding of the very important industry of computer technological services. All right, now, next, we have our two events, we had Discover Ames, and we also had Explore Ames, so with Discover Ames, we had part-time early childhood professors, Thora Papst and Kathy Glazier, they participated in this wonderful event where they showcased the Education Department. Now, they shared information about the program with prospective students and networked with other Ames faculty. What an amazing opportunity to connect, get to know each other, all right, plus highlight the Education Department, all right, it's pretty wonderful, wonderful. Now, do you all remember when we were small children, or small children, but we, how did we learn? Did we learn through games? Yeah, we learned through puzzles, we learned through games, and it was easy, right? So I'm a big proponent on game-based learning, because I feel like a kid again, and I'm learning information that I may not be able to understand in the traditional way, okay? Well, thanks to our part, or not part-time, thanks to our instructor of early childhood education, Laura Killen-Wing, she knows how important game-based learning is. In fact, Laura participated in the Explore Ames on Friday, November seventeenth, where she was able to share the world of early childhood education through an escape room experience with high school students. Have you all ever heard of an escape room?
Yes.
I have too, in fact, I want to go, I'm like, where's the one for public speaking? I'm going to start one. All right, so, but for those of us that don't know you all, an escape room is a game which a team of players discover clues, they solve puzzles, and they accomplish tasks in one or more rooms in order to accomplish a specific goal. So really, what I love about this is you're really putting the learning in the hands of the students and helping them be accountable, so hats off to Laura for doing this. Now, another fun pairing was between our art department, so instructor Charles Lucas, and we have a local author by the name of Janet, and I hope I'm saying this right, Janet Flower. Now Janet wrote a children's book called What If We Had a Dinosaur? And what they did is Janet wrote the book, Charles illustrated the book, and then what they did is they had a reading, and then they had an art project following the reading, I mean, how fun, right? So kids get to hear about the dinosaurs, and then they get to artistically describe it, and snacks were involved. Alright, what a fun collaborative community effort there on behalf, again, of the Early Childhood Education Department. Now, when it comes to instructor of, we're actually going to move on here to training and professional development. Instructor of Automated Service Technology, Ally Bowen, is really demonstrating some cutting-edge technology in the automotive field. She is really honing on how to service, diagnose and take care of the advanced hydrogen and electric vehicles, which we know are very important on the horizon here in our world today. Right, we may not have flying cars yet, but we do have the hydro. Okay, so I think this is great because Ally's able to provide this top-notch education to her students, alright? This is the great thing about a lot of these accomplishments, everyone, is we are able to bring back this knowledge and education to our students and enhance their lives through ours, alright? Such a beautiful collaborative effort. Now, when, when, when COVID first started, it was a little bit for, for professors, it was a little scary. How am I going to teach this? How am I going to do this, right? I teach public speaking. How am I going to do that in a different modality? Well, we figured it out and what, what I, what happened to me later on was that I would have a student in Zoom. And then I'd have students in my class. So I've got a student up here on Zoom. I hope I don't forget about him, right, as I'm teaching my class. So in, I think it's very important to be able to teach our faculty these co-location courses and how to do it effectively. So part-time behavioral science professor, Marge Lambeth, and Darlene Half, once again, teamed up to present an F T L C talk on how to do this effectively. Really important to you all for the novice and new teacher. Alright, let's go ahead and close this off to, and we're going to be looking at publications and I want to highlight one main publication for December and that is Professor of English, Megan Friesen. And she had an article published entitled Building Sense of Belonging Through Undergraduate Conference Attendance. Now, this case study focused on understanding how attending an undergraduate conference contributes to students' sense of belonging, not only in their own university or their institution, but in the larger academic community as well. Some major findings here were the importance of the faculty role as a catalyst for student involvement. Increased student appreciation for their college and increased involvement of students in the academic, academic community. I hope I did my colleagues proud today as thus ends the report for the B O T for December twenty twenty-three. Questions?
Julie, you always do them proud. You really do. I enjoy your reports.
I'm feeling the hugs and the love and I appreciate it.
Any, any questions or comments? Okay, well, thank you so very much and, uh, happy holidays.
Happy holidays to everyone as well. Alright, make sure everybody jingles their bells, okay? Alright.
Okay, next, uh, is the Ames Staff Association, Ross Perkins.
Well, good afternoon, everyone. There are Zinger, trustees, Dr. Rothmer, guests and friends. Can't believe we're eighteen days to the end of the year. Take a moment and step that in for a few seconds there. Where'd you go? I don't know. Uh, it goes by so fast. Um, so ASA continues to really explore ideas and ways that we can support students beyond just our jobs. Uh, and so we have done a couple of things this past month and kind of what we plan to do in the spring and things like that. Uh, on November seventeenth, uh, we had a volunteer opportunity over at the Will County Food Bank and I believe, uh, Trustee Wendell, you were there and Dr. B. Uh, and I believe there were probably about twenty-eight other folks who volunteered to, uh, package onions and divide food and things like that. I heard everybody smelled like onions when y'all left that. That's awesome. It's a new cologne I'm going to work on. Um, it sounds like they, uh, processed about fifteen thousand pounds of food. Uh, and just so that folks know that the work that we do at the Will County Food Bank for our volunteer time uh, through ASA directly impacts and contributes to our artist pantry. Uh, we work with them closely, so that's a way that folks can give back, uh, to the college, but also to our community and things like that. Uh, I want to take a moment too to also thank Nan Prince. Uh, uh, she's been part of ASA for probably since she's been here, twenty years. She's our historian, if you will. Uh, she is the one who organizes this and puts this together every semester and we will continue to do that next semester. We get such good feedback from that. And so I just want to give a quick shout out to Nan for that. I believe she's over at the PSI building today. So, uh, for putting that all together. Uh, some other opportunities that we're working on in the spring is to, uh, collaborate with United Way of Will County to create some opportunities for some volunteer. Uh, and just for folks who are out there in the audience and, uh, internet world, uh, you know, Ames provides us with about thirty hours, well, with thirty hours of volunteer time that we can use as staff members. And so I really encourage folks to take advantage of that uh, and give back not only, not only to the college, but also maybe to your community and things like that. So um, so just this past week, we completed the hygiene roundup. Uh, you probably saw that and got emails or communications and things like that. Um, we collaborated with A F A and S G A and we also, uh, looped in the new group, uh, the A A G. Uh, Zach's the chair of that group. Uh, and we've had some great donations. Uh, we don't have a count yet um, on what that is. I think they're going around collecting today. Uh, and also folks had an opportunity, if they just didn't want to buy stuff or just, you know, sometimes you just forget about it. Uh, we did have an opportunity for them to, uh, donate money or gift cards and things like that. And so, uh, I believe I got an email from Kelly Jackson of the Foundation and said that there's been some increases, so I'm looking forward to a report and be able to report that out at the first of the year uh, in the next meeting, like kind of how that turned out. I'm hoping this will be a continuation of something that we can do annually to continue to replenish the, um, artist pantry, especially as we expand to that pantry out here. Uh, there's going to be more opportunities to, for students to take advantage of those things and stuff. Um, graduation, uh, incredible graduation, you know, uh, I sit on the, the graduation committee and I want to thank, uh, Christina Edwards and her team and everybody, all the volunteers that helped out with that. But I, I wanted, uh, to talk about a second graduation that happens. And this happened on Saturday and this is for the Fire Academy and the Police Academy. And I want to just give a shout out to John McDougall and Brian Nix, the directors of those two programs respectively, and their teams for putting on this graduation and the CPAT day over there. We had standing room all uh, for both those graduations for our Fire Academy and our Police Academy. And it was incredible to see the community come out and support our, um, our graduates in those areas and stuff like that. So, uh, just a real, a big shout out for them for organizing that and working with all the groups around here to put that together along with the other graduation that took place on Friday. Uh, big accomplishment and things like that. Wow, Gateway Building, amazing, isn't it? Uh, got the tour and everything. Um, but one of the things I think folks don't remember is, you know, this is an empty building or was an empty building. Um, and the, the move to move everything into this building, not only from Greeley Campus in here, but also from Public Safety over and just everything. Uh, I want to give a shout out to David Mont, uh, and his team, Shelby and Mark, and all the other ones that are going to be helping organize. We've been meeting for months about the move and stuff like that. Um, it's a big move and I think they've learned a lot from all the different moves they've done. Uh, but it seems like it's going pretty smooth. But I want to just, you know, recognize those folks who are organizing the move of all this stuff and, uh, the work that they're doing, plus their other jobs and stuff. Uh, and then finally, I want to, uh, just say thank you to Trustee Holt and Chair Oxinger about, uh, your leadership for the college and the service that you provided and the vision. Uh, I want to thank you all both for your time, uh, on behalf of the ASA. Uh, thank you. Any questions? Some loves and hugs?
I'll take those too. I just, uh, make a comment. Uh, I agree with you. Graduation, uh, the, the, the other day was absolutely awesome. Uh, talking with Christie and some of the folks over there, Jack, your other, and some of the folks over there. Um, we've got that down to a science and it really is, um, fun, a fun event to watch. Uh, I know the students get a lot out of it. Uh, we get a lot out of it and, um, it's fun to watch those students go through and, and everything runs so smoothly. Uh, for the Fire and Police Academy graduations, they were great. Uh, they went off without a hitch. Uh, again, John does a great job out there. Um, um, it was your first time out there, uh, in that position. Uh, you did good. You did a really good speech, so, uh, um, you know, I can't, uh, I can't say enough about how impressive these graduation ceremonies are and how many students are going through them. Um, we've got a lot of success there, so I just wanted to compliment you on that.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Have a great day.
Okay, that concludes representing this to the board and guests. Um, next on the agenda is Action Item. Action Item A, Mill Levy Certification for Fiscal Year Two Thousand and Twenty Four. Uh, Chuck advised me earlier, uh, you can, I'll let you, I'll let you tell us, Chuck.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yes, uh, this is normally the, uh, meeting where I present to the board the Mill Levy Certification for the next, uh, the next fiscal year. Uh, or for this fiscal year, actually. Uh, and, uh, with the failure of, of a valid item H H in the last election, uh, that was a valid issue that, um, was to make some changes to property taxes. After that failed, the governor did call a special session and brought the legislature back in for special session to address property tax relief for Colorado. As I talked in my budget assumptions and looking at what the effect of the valid issue H H would have had on the college, uh, it was, uh, a very minimal impact on the college because it was a primarily focused, focused on residential rate reductions and an exemption for, uh, single-family homes, uh, over the two main components, two main fiscal components of H H. And as we know here in Will County, uh, any, uh, rate reduction, residential rate reduction is, is offset by the inventory that continues to grow in residential property within our tax districts. So, long story short, you know, when I presented budget assumptions, the, the impact of H H, uh, to the college, uh, would have, was minimal. Uh, correspondingly then to the special session, uh, pretty much what the legislature did was enact those same similar components of reducing the residential rate assessment and upping the homeowner exemption, uh, dollar from almost twenty thousand to fifty thousand. Again, the same parameters that H H would have done. So, long story short on that, uh, the impact to the college remains the same. However, what this has caused is that everything's been moved back a couple of weeks in the Cessar certifications to districts. And, uh, what used to be, uh, a December fifteenth deadline for us to certify our mill levies to the county has now turned into January tenth. And so everything backed up. I have not received final certifications. I did receive one yesterday from one of the small counties. Uh, so I have not yet received the other five certifications in the county Cessar's office. So, uh, with that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I would, uh, I would, I would recommend that this item be tabled until we'll probably have to have a special session, a special meeting prior to the, or maybe at the board. Yeah, no jury is working at the board on that and I'll, I'll leave that up to that conversation between the chair and, and the president's office as far as when the board, when I'd be able to present that certification and appropriation authority to the board. So uh, that's, uh, Item A, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you, Chuck. Um, I think that, uh, just to be safe, Jared, did you have a comment?
Yeah, I was just going to add to, um, to what Chuck just said, that I'll be reaching out to the board after this meeting to get your availability uh, between now and January the tenth. Um, I'll be looking at Dr. Bornstein to see her preferences as well. There is a possibility that we may do it at the very beginning of the board retreat on January tenth, depending on the conversations with Dr. Bornstein and our facilitator as well. So I'll be reaching out after this meeting.
So just to be safe, rather than just, uh, have myself set this aside as chair, uh, since how I'm going, I think it'd be safer to, uh, go ahead and entertain a motion uh, to set this aside to a date, uh, yet to be announced, uh, for, uh, future consideration. So, uh, if I could get, uh, such a motion, I would appreciate it.
I would go to set this aside for a future date. It's convenient for all concern.
Thank you, Mark. Uh, second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify the same. I, I oppose the same side. That motion is carried and we set that aside until a future date.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Appreciate it, Chuck. Okay, moving on, uh, to Item B, Resolution to Authorize the Negotiation and Purchase of Certain Real Estate Structure Only. Chuck, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Yeah, before you, Action Item Seven B. Uh, this is a continuation of, of the action the board took at the, at the November meeting to approve the, uh, A and E program and to, uh, move forward with the purchase of, uh, property or authorizing the purchase of the property at the Discovery Air Campus. This is the official resolution, uh, to accompany that, um, much as we have in the past. Uh, when we purchase real estate, uh, this resolution needs to come to the board or the board, um, authorizes the president uh, to enter into negotiations and all the legal documents and real estate documents to purchase, uh, property, real estate and in this case, structure only. And then, um, that usually, uh, I work at the president's office and, uh, you work with our, our legal counsel as we move through the, the process there to purchase property. So this is the resolution to authorize the negotiation and purchase of certain real property, structure only. Uh, the purchase of this real estate, structure only, will support the airframe and power plant program A and E also referred to as the Aircraft Mechanic Technician School and the Associated Aircraft Maintenance Training Center. Uh, as, as noted in the appendix, uh, to the action item, uh, this building is known as Building G and is part of the Discovery Air Campus, which is located on the Northern Colorado Airport, Regional Airport. Uh, as we've talked in, in the, in the process of going through that program, uh, Discovery Air has entered into a fifty-year round lease with the airport authority and the college will of course pay its proportional percentage of its annual ground lease payment to the, uh, Northern Colorado Regional Airport. Uh, fiscal impact is, is dependent upon final negotiations with the developer and seller of the Building G within the Discovery Air Campus. So, an administrative recommendation is to approve the resolution to negotiate and purchase the real estate, structure only, identified as Building G, located within the Discovery Air Campus at the Northern Colorado Regional Airport, Lindbergh Drive, Loveland, Colorado. Eight oh, I agree. Mr. Chairman?
That's pretty specific.
It's pretty specific.
Alright, thank you, Chuck. Any questions, Chuck? No? Well, this is pretty exciting stuff. Uh, it really is. Um, I, I know we've talked about this before and, uh, I know we were all, uh, basically, uh, we have, uh, indicated that we are, uh, very supportive of this project. But, uh, you know, the rubber meets the road. We need to, uh, buy in this structure so we can break ground and, uh, and get moving on this, uh, incredible, um, aviation project. Um, I think, uh, Trustee Hout, uh, said it best when he said that, uh, this is the first project that he's ever seen come before this, uh, this board that is, um, as you said, is, uh, in the black in five years, I think he said. So, uh, and I, I think his fairness is real accurate, so, uh, this, this is really, it has a positive outcome, uh, on the near future for it. So, uh, uh, I will certainly be supporting this, but, um, anybody else have any comments? Any questions at all?
I do have a question.
Oh, thank you, Marilyn.
I do have a question. On that last boat, I abstained.
Yes, you did.
After I was very positive about it.
Yes, you did.
Since the water's already gone over the dam, do I need to abstain again?
Yes, you do.
Okay.
So we all know where you stand. Yeah. And I thought I helped you out with that, with that little quote. Okay. So, um, with that, I would, uh, entertain a motion to approve Action Item B per the administrative recommendation, so you don't have to repeat all of that. per the administrative recommendation, so you don't have to repeat all of that. So, to move, to approve the administrative recommendation.
Make a motion to approve the administrative recommendation.
May I second that?
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, same sign?
Exchange.
Thank you, and that motion is carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Congratulations. You told me this is an exciting day for Ames. Okay, next on the agenda, item, action item C. The Ames Work Board Innovation Center, and Dr. Russ Rothburn presenting.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, members of the board. I'm very happy to be here again. As you recall, I'm seeing both Dr. Spesa and myself and afraid of Ames team members over the fall semester. Where we shared information with you about the potential of a Ames Workforce Innovation Center. A lot of that material that we presented to you over the fall is in your binder as a reminder of the work and research that has been done about this opportunity. So at this time, I'd like to turn it over to Dr. Spesa for the specific request in our action item.
Good afternoon, Chair Oxiger, board members, colleagues. Chair Oxiger and board, I'd like to present to you the action item seven C, the Ames Workforce Innovation Center. And the administrative recommendation is to approve the building of an Ames Workforce Innovation Center.
Okay, that was shortened so you can, that's the shortest in the city of Missouri.
I'm short, being sweet.
Okay, are there any questions? Okay, we'll get to those. Any, any questions, any comments? Go ahead.
I just have a quick comment. Um, I was listening to NPR and, um, the enrollment for colleges are going down, universities and so forth, and to market and try to grab hold of more students that are reaching, trying to figure out how to build libraries or build rec centers or something, and they all have to go out for bond issues, et cetera. We're in a really interesting, amazing position right now to do something, um. Plus, community colleges, I think, are ga- gathering strength. And Ames is in a perfect position, I think, um, to see something like this. Um, I think it would be beneficial for students, definitely beneficial for the community. Um, I think it's, I mean, there's, there's light at the end of the tunnel that we can't even see, I think. So, um, that's just my, my quick comments on this potential.
Thank you for that, Heidi Mark.
I, I don't know if it was the Tribune this past week or post on Sunday, but, uh, the state is implementing an intern apprenticeship program that I think are in Florida, down, down South County, um, and then also another school, another larger school. And this is just to continue on what's starting to appear. It's a new paradigm is what we're into, and it's kind of like the old paradigm, but it's with, with innovation, obviously. And so it's, it's very, uh, rewarding this. This might be the other competition to having, uh, another cash flowing situation evolved with this college, if the, with the investment that we're gonna make and the cooperations with other businesses.
Thank you, Mark. Any other comments? Questions? Marilyn?
Um, I've said it before, but I think this is, we're skating where the puck's going. And so this one puts a say.
You know, this is, um, we've talked about this before and we're all aware that we have fast-tracked, um, this item. Um, the college has been looking at a workforce innovation center kind of behind the scenes for years. And, um, this kind of helped, uh, push that forward. It helped a lot. Uh, in fact, it was like Matt Trump getting behind it, but, um, work, uh, workforce innovation centers, uh, are he, are huge for, um, workforce development. When we, I say we, there was a group of us went to a, a demonstration of an, of a, a drone. But, and we did it at a workforce innovation center, a very small one. And it was more for high school kids than anybody else. And there was a gentleman, uh, working there that was teaching high school kids how to work on drones and things at a very small scale, and doing a lot of other stuff as well. Well, he struck a chord with us, um, and that was, I think, more than five years ago. Fast forward to today, the gentleman that we went down to see and visit, this Jake Marshall, who is over here, and we hired him, and look what he's done with this drone program. Those were the ideas he had at this, uh, little workforce center that he couldn't get anywhere. It was a small place that didn't have many resources, just working with high school kids, but he had all these incredible ideas. And he brought them to Ames and we had the resources, we were able to help him. I see the same thing here with Alquist. I see Alquist coming in, um, and will be a tenant, uh, if we pass this today. And the spinoffs from Alquist are amazing. Uh, there, if you can imagine it, it's a possibility from one of these centers. And, um, as you know, Ames has a great imagination. And, uh, this is what we thrive on, is doing these things and providing, um, employees to the community in these various businesses or, uh, industries that develop. So, um, I think we're gonna hit a home run here. So, I'll, I'll definitely be supporting this. I'm, I'm really excited about this, and I think it's, it's gonna go where the, um, where the, uh, other building that we just approved is gonna go. It's gonna be that positive, so. Anyway, more time, any other comments?
Yeah.
I would just say, I think this sends a message to our taxpaying community that we, we really stand behind our mission of, uh, developing uh, skills that are needed in our community. Workforce innovation, we're, we're looking at it on a, a daily, monthly, yearly basis. I, I, I'll be very supportive, you know, of this motion.
Okay, well then, let's get to it. Do I have a motion, um, to approve the building of an Ames Workforce Innovation Center?
I chose to move, thank you.
Well, second, we have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye, aye. Opposed, same sign? And that motion carries. Congratulations.
I just want to say thank you, uh, for each of you making those comments. One of the reasons we get to be short and sweet is because we have such a well-informed board, so we appreciate your support and all the positivity.
Okay, now go get off the show. Okay, next on the agenda, uh, action item seven D. The new Associate of Applied Science Degree and Master Automobile Service Technology. That's the Ford Asset Program, Dr. David Ailer. Vice President of Academic.
Thank you, Chair Oxiger, board, cabinet, colleagues. Um, I'm coming forward, uh, asking for approval to move forward with the Ford Asset, ASS Degree Initiative for fall twenty twenty-four.
Okay. I'm, I'm lost.
I'm trying to be shorter than.
Okay, is that it?
That, that's it.
Okay, I was waiting for a sweep. No offense. Okay, um, any questions? So, Dr. Ailer. Okay, any comments? Mark, that deserves a comment.
We need mechanics. Especially Ford mechanics.
You know, thanks, Mark. You know, the, the comment that was, uh, made earlier about this being forward and, and the curriculum not changing of being what it has been, we're, we're just adding the internship, you know, we're doing. So I have to assume that Ford has reviewed our curriculum. And I think the fact that they have approved our curriculum, obviously, is a huge shout out to the automotive department and the curriculum that they had developed and had presented. I mean, for a company of that size, uh, to not make any recommended changes to a curriculum, I think, it's big volumes. So I commend you for that.
Thank you, and a lot of that credit goes to Larry Baker, who looked through our courses, looked through the requirements for the Ford program, matched things up, and, uh, came back with a proposal that meets their specifications and needs.
Sure. Yeah, well, uh, I think, is it, if Larry's out there, I hope he hears this, but congratulations to Larry, so that, that's awesome. And to Fred and the whole bunch, they've been doing amazing things out there at the automotive department for years, and, uh, this is just testament to the, to the great work that you continue to do. So with that comment, are there any others? Well then, do we have a motion to approve the automotive program?
I, uh, move that be approved, action item number seven D. Um, Associate of Applied Science Degree and Master Automobile Service Technology. Congratulations.
Okay, now we have a motion, do we have a second?
Second, that motion.
And we have a, a second. With no other comments, I would ask the question, yes, Mark?
Dear Chair, thank you for bringing up Fred on that one.
Yes, you're welcome. Okay. I'll ask the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? And motion is carried. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. I think the next one is E. The, uh, sabbatical request for April McClure. Is that correct?
Yes, it is. Thank you very much.
Dr. Ailer, you're up.
Okay, um, we have sabbatical, um, recommendations in this month's board meeting. The first one is for April McClure for a sabbatical leave for the fall twenty twenty-four academic semester. And we recommend approval.
Hey, any questions? Comments? Um, the, uh, applications were included in your packets, for those of you out there wondering, well, how do they know? Well, we, uh, we have this information in our packets and we're all required to have read that information, so, uh, we're familiar with, uh, these requests and why they're being requested and given, so, um. With that said, if there's no questions or comments, I would entertain a motion to approve the sabbatical request for April McClure. So, uh, we have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
We have a second. Any other comments? Hearing none, all, um, Marilyn.
I was just a big comment, I, I think on all of the sabbaticals, um, holy smokes, there's a lot of detail and I think a lot of, um, vision for work that can be done during these, and so, and I think with this one being the first one, um, I think all of them exhibit that, but.
Okay, thank you for that, Marilyn. Okay, there's no, no other comments? Entertain a motion.
I made a motion to approve the sabbatical request for April McClure.
Sorry to, sorry to jump in, we already have a motion and a second, so we just need the, the vote.
Oh, we already did that? Sorry.
Yeah, we are.
Okay. Well then, I'll ask the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Okay, moving on. Uh, item F, uh, sabbatical request for Jared Merk. Dr. Ailer, you're still up.
Okay, thank you very much. Um, the administrative recommendation is approval for Jared Merk for a sabbatical leave for spring semester twenty twenty-five.
Any questions, comments on, um, Jared Merk? Okay, we have a motion?
I'll move, um, to approve action item number seven F, um, sabbatical request for Jared Merk.
Okay, we have a second? And we have a second. There's no other comments? I'll ask the question, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? Okay, congratulations, Jared. That request is approved. Moving on. Item E, Emma Murray. Sabbatical request. Dr. Ailer.
Thank you. Uh, the administrative recommendation is to approve Emma Murray for a sabbatical leave for fall twenty twenty-four.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any questions, comments on Emma Murray?
Hi. Um, just a quick comment, um, I remember the, the teachers, I believe, coming back from sabbatical sometime this year. They were so refreshed and so renewed and so excited to go back to teaching. Um, it's, it's an important, um, it's an important thing to do for these teachers, so.
Okay, thank you for that. Anyone else? Do we have a motion?
I made a motion to approve the sabbatical request for Emma Murray.
Okay, I'm second. Second, the motion is second to approve the sabbatical request for Emma Murray. Hearing no other comments? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign? That motion carries. Congratulations. Anything else, Dr. Ailer?
Uh, yes, I'll just add that I was also very impressed with the reports back from last, the last round of sabbatical, uh, recipients, and I was very pleased in, when I looked at these applications, that they're all going to do something that's practical toward helping improve student learning at Ames. So thank you for the approval.
Thank you, Dr. Ailer. Well, this is something, uh, that we only do every two years, so, um.
Great.
Yeah. So I was gonna ask, uh, trustee Hout to come to the podium, but since he's here, we'll just continue. Um, well, it's been eight years, eight exciting years, a, a whole lot has been accomplished by this board, uh, over the past eight years, Mark, and it's been a pleasure being there with you, beside you, and, um, having the honor to, uh, be involved. and having the honor to be involved in everything that's happened. I think you'll agree that this board has done amazing things. So I want to thank you for your service to Ames Community College. Thank you for the pleasure of working with you. And congratulations on your service to Ames. And I wish you well in your retirement or whatever your future plans on. Thank you very, very much.
Okay.
Thanks. You want to say a few words?
Sure, a little bit. Won't be too long. I, you know, 2015, Lyle and I came onboard and we were indelibly involved with the college. Lyle, probably another 20 years prior to me being here, back in the early days when it started. I, since late 90s, was involved with the building trades programs and construction trades. And so it was always, it was always a place, a mecca point. And what we've seen happen with Ames Community College over the last, in our tenure, but community colleges across the nation, they are really the center of the wheel. K through 12 education is pivoting off of community colleges. Warrior institutions are now pivoting off of community colleges. Our community college, how it's grown in so many dimensional ways. I onboarded, I think concurrent enrollment was 11%. Now we're 40. Wow, that's a big statement. When I first onboarded, they said, the role of the community college is serve K through 12 education. Technically, that's not our statute. It's a little bit different for junior colleges. I learned that later, but that really made me happy because the goal with my area and the skills area is back into the high schools. The more we can introduce that enthusiasm, the better it will be. We're doing that. I'm so proud of you guys that way. I have something, this last, get four minutes. We'll take off. Mary Ellen, you might help me.
Your turn.
This last semester, my son, in his high school year, built a clay pot, coil pot per se. Something similar like this. And this last semester, I decided, but it fell over and broke, so I had to replace it. I feel guilty. So I've been building these. There's gonna be one of seven by the end of next semester. What we did though, at the beginning of that class. Oh, thank you. Can everybody hear me? I'm talking louder now. We did pinch pots. It's the first thing you do. Roll the clay, put your thumbs into it, move it around. Doesn't have to be big. I built a big one. And I built these three small ones. So what I did our last class, I asked everybody, all our classmates, because it's really a pensive process. You're in your group, working the clay, got a little bit of socialization, but the most part you're doing your thing. I asked everybody, can I have your pinch pots? So I have about 15 or 20 pinch pots. But I was thinking, when you, when we come here as board members and when we share our ideas, I came up with this thought, a penny for your thought. Then I looked up penny for your thought. It's got kind of a unique little connotation. It can be very positive things or it could be, well, you look sad. But a penny for your thoughts. And that's how that came about. So it's got a, in between a crying and a smile, me. The thing that happens here with Julie, Jared, Ross, Misty, golly, I wouldn't need $1,000 to have hear all of your thoughts that you said, you know? And that's the one thing that this, when we have these meetings, those thoughts that you share, some of the positive ones, some of the ones that we can intuitively look, well, is there a problem there? Well, then we kind of open up Pandora's box there. And then you share some of the difficulties. And that's how I've grown to understand working with this college. Because you have to ask some questions from time to time. It might open up that lid a little bit, but at least you feel comfortable with the answers. You know where you're standing. What you folks are doing, I'm so proud of. I have nothing but the warmest feelings for this college, period. We've all been through a lot, but the long and the short, I'm very proud of every one of you. I appreciate the handshakes, the fist bumps, the hugs, the smiles. And thank you. It's been wonderful. So you want to do this now or later?
I don't know.
I'm on a roll, so my mouth can go. I usually make it a little bit more challenging.
Do you need help, Mark?
No, that's what I asked.
Well, no, I didn't know where to go.
There we go. We're got him on in here. Just lay him out. I don't have enough for everybody, but I will drop them off at the end of each semester. And Jerry, you'll have to find a corner box for the president's office. And I'll make it a point. These go all for my classmates. Some of them are pinch pots, some of them are actually nicely done.
You seriously like.
And I don't want to, some of them are different firings, they're not special. You might make a quarter jar. There's a heart. The thing that I, that makes this college so proudful about what it does, and we have to respect that, is our ability to do things for other institutions and just aren't funded correctly. I mean, how we support our schools, our K through nine, K through 12, those are struggling, struggling programs at times if they're not supported correctly. The APRES students, how we can define them. And I just, I just want to be, make yourself aware that you're doing some great things. And I'm almost done. Unless you got that one. I didn't do much throwing. I did all coil building. Jerry? Dr. B.
Stay out. It's very thoughtful.
And I don't think Joe's, is Joe here?
No, Hila.
Hila. Okay. I do have other presents for you, you four. If you didn't get that in time, I'll do that in another day. A penny for your thought or something.
Chair Oxegar, if you could join me at the podium, please.
Yes, sir.
So while we have a formal plaque that I'll read in a moment, one of the things I wanted to share is we get to see your leadership every time publicly when we come to a meeting. But one of the things I first recognized in you and very much appreciated about getting to know you is every time I came to a board of trustees meeting and you would be here early and you would come up and greet me and everyone else in the room with a smile, a handshake, and just made me, when I first started, and others feel welcome and that we belonged. And your passion and interest for this institution has been unwavering. And in the short time I've been here, I just cannot thank you enough. And for those of you who don't know, Dr. Borstein is very disappointed that she can't be here today. As I said earlier today during the ribbon cutting, she is exhibiting our Ames values of Ames being a community college of care and staying home when she is ill. So we're certainly passing along our well wishes to her. And certainly she'll have some other thoughts and things for you, but I wanted to share with you what you've meant to me in the time that I've been in Northern Colorado. And I want to thank you and your time and service with Ames. But we do have this plaque for you that recognizes Lyle Oxegar. Says, in grateful appreciation of your eight years of dedicated service and selfless contribution to the college. And specifically, it lists the dates of 2015 to 2023. And during that time, you served as a board chair from 2019 to 2023 and also as board secretary from 2017 to 2019. Cannot thank you enough, sir. Thank you. Boris, thank you for those comments. They're very much appreciated. Well, I'm gonna be the, where Mark is the sweet part, I'm gonna be the short part. So I'm gonna be sweet and short. If I were to try to say too much here, I know I wouldn't hold it together. This is very emotional for me. This college means the world to me. I started out here in 1971. And in one capacity or the other, whether a student, a advisory board member, an instructor, and then later on the board, I've been involved with Ames Community College for all of those years. Some people might say I'm a slow learner, but I'm still here. I love it. As for all of you, I can't tell you how much I appreciate you. And I tell you that regularly. So all of the things that I've said to you, all the things you know you mean to me and everything, that was sincere and I don't need to go through it all. And today, I just want to say thank you again from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate it very, very, very much. You'll always mean the world to me. So I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna totally go away. I'm gonna try to find some way to stay involved with Ames College. But I want to thank you for this. Thank you for all you do for Ames. It is without a doubt one of the best institutions of higher learning in the country. And we prove it every day. You prove it every day. So and just this building today is a testament to some of the things we do and the way we do it and where we're going. I am so jealous of John and Janine that they're going to get to step into these seats and continue on. There are so many things in the near and distant future that this college is gonna do. And I would love to be part of it, but they're gonna get to. So I congratulate them. I'm jealous of you. So good luck and keep up the tradition. We'll see you around. Thank you. My last official act is to take a break. Take about a 10-minute break. In fact, let's be back here five minutes after three. And we'll continue with the rest of the meeting. Thank you, Mary Ellen.
Thank you all. We're gonna move on to the next part of the meeting now. Before we do, I just wanted to give a one last thanks to Chair Oxegar and trustee Hou for their service to Ames. And now we'll move on to the swearing in of trustees. So for our first trustee, trustee Wendell, would you please join me here at the podium?
Aye, Heidi Wendell, solemnly swear.
Aye, Heidi Wendell, do solemnly swear.
To faithfully perform the duties.
To faithfully perform the duties.
Of the office of District A, Board of Trustees.
Of the Office of District A, Board of Trustees, member.
Of the Ames College District, as required by law.
Of the Ames College District, as required by law.
To support the Constitution of the United States.
And to support the Constitution of the United States. The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws may pursue it thereto. Congratulations, trustee.
Please, Jerry.
Do you, if you'll join me at the podium, please? Raise your right hand and repeat after me. Aye, Janine Trustwell, do solemnly swear.
Aye, Janine Trustwell, do solemnly swear.
To faithfully perform the duties.
To faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of District D, Board of Trustees, member.
Of the Office of District B, Board of Trustees, member.
Of the Ames College District, as required by law. And to support the Constitution of the United States.
And to support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado. And the laws may pursue it thereto.
Thank you. John W. Hayfley, if you'll join me here, please. Right hand and repeat after me. Aye, John W. Hayfley, do solemnly swear.
Aye, John W. Hayfley, do solemnly swear.
To faithfully perform the duties.
To faithfully perform the duties.
Of the Office of District E, Board of Trustees, member.
Of the Office of District E, Board of Trustees, member.
Of the Ames College District, as required by law. And to support the Constitution of the United States.
And support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
The Constitution of the State of Colorado.
And the laws may pursue it thereto.
And the laws may pursue it thereto.
Now we will move on to the next item, which is signing up a number of different documents for different folks. So we'll take a brief break while everybody gets signatures going and then we'll move on to our next item in just a minute. If the three trustees that were just sworn in want to join me at my spot, I'll get your signature signed. If the three trustees that were just sworn in want to join me at my spot, I'll get your inscribed sign. For me, after we're done with that fun, we'll move on to the next piece of the agenda as listed, which is the election of officers. Currently, clearly, we do not have a chair, so I will moderate this piece of the meeting and then hand it over to the chair once we have a new chair elected. So moving on to that item, we will now open nominations for Chair of the Board of Trustees of Ames Community College. Do I hear any nominations?
Jerry, I would like to nominate Marilyn Shock. President, Chair.
Thank you, trustee Windell, and we have a second from trustee Hayfley. Marilyn Shock is duly nominated to be Chair of the Board of Trustees. Do I hear any other nominations? Hearing none, I will hand it over to Marilyn Shock, trustee Shock, to do a brief, a few brief words on why you're interested in the role and what you would like to do with it.
I don't know that I would change a whole lot to do anything with it. But when we think about our vision of looking ahead to empower the future today, it's really just about being present with the board, continuing to partner, continuing to work together, and then taking that lead role in regards with the community and that communication. Aside of that, I think the board's strong and really does work well together and making some big decisions. And when we think about our vision to empower the future, the future has so many things happening right now. I mean, just case in point, today's meeting with the actions that were taken and the next moves and the growth and really preparing for the future is huge. And so I would be honored to be in that role.
Thank you, trustee Shock. With no other nominations being received, we will, by unanimous consent, appoint you to the position of Chair of Ames Board of Trustees. Congratulations, Chair Shock. Chair Shock, if you'd like to take your receipt at the chair's position. And trustee Hayfley, if you'd like to shift.
Shock, your side.
There's the microphone. I'll take a little bit. So we have two positions as well that we need to move through from elections as well. And so we'll start with the secretary position. Do we have any nominations for our secretary? Can I nominate? I would nominate Jean O'Hare, who currently serves in that role as well, for the secretary position. I'll second that. I guess we don't even need to do a unanimous as well, correct? Unless there is another nomination.
Correct, yes. Without any other nominations, it can be done by unanimous consent.
I move the nominations to cease.
Thank you. Okay, Jean.
I accept the role and am honored to serve in that role again.
Thank you. And we have a treasurer position. Would you like to make a nomination for a treasurer position?
That was nominated. Heidi, this is the role of treasurer. Second.
Do I have any other nominations? A unanimous consent? Heidi?
I will accept that position. I appreciate it. Thank you.
And we have a selection of our foundation board liaison. And is this an actual nomination?
This one does not require a nomination. Anyone can volunteer for this position. If multiple people want to volunteer, then we will go through a more formal process to decide. But if there's only one person who volunteers, then that person would just be appointed to that role.
Okay. Apparently Heidi sits in that role as we are doing the changeover as well, just as an FYI. So is anybody interested in that role?
Sure, I'll do it.
Great. Thank you, John. Is anybody else? Just to make sure, give fair. Perfect. John will serve as our foundation board liaison. Thank you. Okay, as I kind of fumbled through the agenda and we'll keep rolling, Jerry, you're up.
Thank you very much, Chair Shock. The next item here is going to be our usual events and upcoming agenda items schedule. So you'll find that in your packet. For upcoming events, because of the winter break, there aren't very many events coming up. But just as a reminder, the next board retreat will be on January the 10th in the Welcome Center on the Greeley Campus in our Executive Conference Room, 9:00 AM to 4:00 PM. And the next Board of Trustees meeting will be February the 14th on the Greeley Campus in the Welcome Center Ballroom. And then you'll also note in your packet for upcoming agenda items in February, there are quite a few. As Chuck mentioned earlier, during the work session, tuition will be up for action as well as our annual required setting of locations for upcoming board meetings. We'll also get a facilities master plan in depth from Mike Millsaps, and then a number of other items there for annual reports that will be coming. Is there any questions? I'd be happy to answer them.
Any questions for Jerry and Windell? Okay, thank you. I believe on the correspondence is the letter. Is that the only correspondence, Jerry?
There are three pieces of correspondence, so the letter is first, and there are two small notes afterward.
The first one is to the Ames staff from the Congress of United States House Rep. And that is from Congresswoman Congresswoman Indira Carvalho. "Thank you for your commitment to student and worker safety as reflected in your signing of the alliance with OSHA to provide safety and health resources to agricultural students and the general public. This is incredibly important undertaking, and you should be so proud of your efforts to promote the safety and health of our agricultural workforce. By prioritizing safety in the workplace, you have set a stellar example of your students and ensured that your programs are backed by a strong set of values that ensures worker safety and longevity far into the future. Thank you for your many contributions to our community in a shining positive light on the Colorado 8th Congressional District, Congresswoman Carvalho." The second is a note from Riva Bond and family. "Dear Ames Community College, thank you so much for the beautiful arrangement you sent for Dick Bond's service. It was so thoughtful and helpful, brightened our day. Thanks again for our kindness." And the third one is, "Dear Leah, thanking Ames again for your continued support of the Well Legacy Foundation Gala. Your generous contribution helped raise over $300,000 net proceeds for the Bright Futures Program. Thank you again for the participation and appreciate everything Ames does for the community." Okay. Any information or anybody needs on those? Perfect. We'll move on then. I think Heidi's got, will provide us with an update from the foundation.
First off, I'd like to say thank you for the opportunity to serve as a temporary interim liaison to the foundation board. And I had two meetings with them, unbelievably organized. There should be a lot of respect for this organization. And under the leadership of Kelly Jackson, they're doing just wonderful things there. I'd love to come and visit, and I would ask ahead of time. But Kelly's given me some goal achievements, and there's strategic plan goals established in 2023. Now, mind you, the data that I'm receiving is from July 1st to October 31st, so roughly four months worth. This year, and I think last year as well, one of their goals is to add 50 new donors each year. Before I tell you what they've done so far, last year, they wanted to add 50 new donors, and at the end of the year, they added 142, which is just amazing. This year, in the only four months, they've added 122 new donors, which is amazing. They're doing great, great work. They would like to increase the total giving by $250,000. Their goal set this year is $1,238,781. So far, year-to-date, four months only, they have earned 300, I shouldn't say earned, they've been given $317,545. So their year-to-date overall fundraising is up almost 14% over last year at this time. So it just tells you they're incrementally moving in the right direction. And information that Kelly had pointed out, and I didn't know this was happening, is the gift and kind recipients, receipts, excuse me, have reached 29,000 year-to-date. So gift and kind receipts, which I didn't know, could be someone who has donated all their woodworking tools or has donated all their automotive tools to the automotive department or even art supplies. And I think that's a nice way to donate back to the college. Discussions, and I know this has been happening in just the two meetings I was there, with the foundation board have centered around creating a greater impact. New developments include increased scholarships, distribution and creation of a recruiting scholarship, which I know they've been working on for quite a while, and it looks like it's coming to fruition. So I'm so excited for them. Two new foundation board members were voted in at November, and I was there, which I was happy, and I was able to meet them. James Herman and Brooke Payne. And then I believe two more in the pipeline to be voted in in January. So that would make a board of about 12 people, which is, I think that's what their goal was. And if they're already getting this much done with the members that they have now, I don't know what they're going to do with the full board. They're doing just wonderful things. One thing I asked Kelly if I could tell you, one of her long-range goals for this foundation, which I think is an amazing goal, is to eventually have $35 million in the College Promise Fund, which is used for recruiting scholarships. That would be just an amazing feat to undertake. And with Kelly at the helm and everyone on that board, I think they'll meet that goal. So thank you. It was an honor to be the interim liaison, so.
Thank you, trustee Windell. I would just echo, I think the foundation does a phenomenal job. And Kelly, the leadership and your team continue to, I think, do amazing work, so thank you. Okay, we are now at the CEO and President's Report with Dr. Bornstein out. I'm guessing that Dr. Rothmar will facilitate the President's Report. And before we do that, I'd like to ask the board if they have any questions regarding any of the materials in the President's Report section of the packet. Okay, Dr. Rothmar.
Thank you, Chair Shock. I appreciate you starting with Dr. David Taylor, our Vice President of Academic Affairs, has a report on course and lab fees.
Thank you, Dr. Rothmar, Chair Shock, trustees, colleagues. At this time, I'm pleased to present the proposed lab and course fees for Academic Year 2024-25, which is the fall 2024, spring 2025, and summer 2025 semesters. Each year, the deans and the faculty look at the fee structures and propose changes for the following year. And this is a compilation of those recommended changes.
Does the board have any questions for Dr. Taylor? Seeing none. I don't think there's an action in this one.
No, there is not.
Okay. Okay.
Thank you, Dr. Taylor. We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Next part of the President's/CEO report is our legislative pre-session report that Tanet Salazar, our lobbyist, is joining us via Zoom. He will be presenting that information for us.
Welcome, Tanet. Can you hear us? Checking if you can hear us yet, Tanet. Are you able to see the room?
I can hear you guys. This is Dylan I work with, Tanet. I think he's having some audio issues.
He's working on the audio. Are you able to see the room? I'm not sure if you have your screen up and you can see the room.
You can see us, she just can't hear us.
He's working on the audio. So I'll just ask patience here for a minute. I think she's going to try. I think she's gonna try to dial.
Chair, we will come back to Tanet as we work on technical piece. And Zach McFarlane, our Chief Marketing Officer, has some information on our Ames Administrative Group. Thank you, Zach.
Chair Shaw, members of the Board, Dr. Rothmer. Here to present on the Ames Administrators Group, what is the Ames Administrator Group? It's a new group. This was formed because what was recognized was that we have the Ames Faculty Association, the Ames Staff Association and the Student Government Association. And there's this pocket of employees, about twenty-eight, that are administrators, that did not have a similar group to meet, to talk through, to, to deal with the issues that that group has. Your administrators are Vice Presidents, Associate Assistant Vice Presidents, Executive Directors, Chiefs. That's kind of that, that classification. Dr. B noted that, and she met with that group, I think it was toward the end of summer. And she charged that group with the creation of an association for themselves. That charge, and I'm just going to read you a couple of her, her statements that she made during that charge, was that you as administrators and senior leaders are responsible for setting the tone and the direction of our culture at Ames. Our opportunity with this group is to synchronize how we create that culture together across departments and divisions. By meeting and holding deliberate conversations, we can address communication challenges, more effectively develop strategic initiatives and grow together as leaders. So a different call for this group in that it's really formed around our responsibility as administrators to this organization in driving culture and communications forward. That group met to develop a charter that we submitted to College Council about right around early November. That charter was approved, and so this became a formal group, a formal association. In that charter presentation, what that group decided we wanted to do was create an association, again, I'm going to read directly from the charter, that creates consistency and understanding and responsibility of this group's role in driving positive culture forward together collaboratively. To develop opportunities for shared training and education, to enhance consistent communications between members and departments, to utilize a calendar to ensure representation at events institution-wide, as well as both formal and informal ways to acknowledge employees at the college, and also to learn, strategize and grow together. Like I said, this association was formed formally in November, approved by College Council. This is Terry Anderson, our Dean of Allied Health and Wellness, I got it right. And, and he and I were appointed by Dr. B for the first years here as the Chair and the Co-Chair of this group. Terry and I had been directly involved in, in a work group. I think it was spring, summer-ish. No, it was actually a little while, a little further back than that. But a work group really with eighteen other employees around the college from a variety of different departments and divisions. And we really spent three days together looking at all of the issues and opportunities around communication, culture, leadership, diving into those topics to better understand where Ames currently was. And so given our work on that committee and our understanding of, which that was really the genesis of this group, our understanding of, of that is why she, she chose us to, to chair and co-chair that. So I'll be the Chair for a year. Terry's co-chairing, he'll step into the Chair role in the next year. So what we've done since then, since the group was formed, we've been meeting twice a month. We have a formal meeting with an agenda at, at the beginning of the month. I'll talk to you a little bit about that agenda and what we've been doing. And then we have a lunch for the third week of each month for that group. And I think that lunch has been a really, for me personally, a really interesting opportunity to remember that oftentimes in large organizations, we think of people as titles and positions and not people. And as we want to be efficient and effective in our work, it's an opportunity just to sit down, break bread, get to know each other a little bit, which helps us in our day-to-day interactions as we continue to navigate what we all know is a fast-moving college. In that formal agenda, this group came together and decided on a couple of things we wanted to do. One was to form a learning agenda. And specifically in that learning agenda and our time together, wanting to use that to, to form leadership norms and expectations for administrators as we continue to lead this college. To that end, this group really wanted to point the development of leadership norms and expectations towards something. So we're not just creating kitschy things that we read in a book, but that we're addressing real issues and opportunities. What we did there was we had a, a leadership and organizational consultant named Doug Miller came out. He spent three days, three one-day sessions with about forty-five people at Ames, directors, leaders of the college, influencers, to really begin to understand where we are at organizationally as far as our culture. And then actually tomorrow, Doug comes back and presents that information to the Ames Administrators Group. And from there, that group will spend its time in the learning agenda, developing leadership norms and expectations for itself. The second part of the agenda that we've been working on, we've, we've now done this three times, is values. We have values all over the walls. We have them on our website. We print them out. We read them. We know them and we, you know, the words and definitions. But I don't think too often we spend time to sit down and talk about them. And this group spends a significant time in its agenda. We've picked one value per group or per meeting. And we've sat down and talked about, you know, one of the values at a time. We look at what's going well, what's not going well, what's potentially missing and what is confusing in that value and have discourse. And I would say every single time we've done that, it's been a pretty rich conversation and we've been able to pull a lot of information out of it that, that we could take action on and, and continue to drive this, this college board, as you saw in the charge. And then the last bit, and then I can be done because I'm, you know, we've got some technology stuff to sort out, but is training. Really looking at how can this group continue to train together to drive the college board? The first training that we're looking at doing, communications is an issue that regularly comes up, which is the same for any large organization or really any organization. So we want to start diving into that. We have Janine McCloplin coming. We're looking at spring. We're finalizing some dates with her. She is a communications professional who has worked with Cabinet before. And she's going to come out and do two training sessions. One is spokesperson training. So Chair Shaw, congratulations. We'll be talking to, so you know, anyone who might be a spokesperson for the college. If you're a spokesperson for the college, it's probably good you're not practicing while you're the spokesperson. So we want to make sure that we build in some, you know, some training repetition and how we, we speak for the college. And then she's going to do two one-day trainings for the Ames Administrators Group, but also for a group of directors and other people on effective communication, how to tell a story in your communication, how to trim your story up so that people listen and so that you can be heard. And so a very exciting group. It's been a pleasure for me to be Chair of that for the few months that we've been together and to really get to know a lot of our, our colleagues that are administrators. So I appreciate the time and I stand for any questions. Same at Terry.
Any questions or comments?
I just have a comment. I think it's, I think it's wonderful that you are, you're involving all of these people and the fact that you're sitting around breaking bread and realizing you're human beings and we have a lot to offer that you probably would not have known if you had not started this association group. So hats off to you for meeting that often. It's great though.
Hats off to the people meeting. Hads off to me and Terry pitched it. That may such her.
I would just commend you as well. I think anytime the synchronicity of leaders and being able to figure out how to move forward together and yet have those conversations and relationships is really key for a healthy organization. So I think it's a great idea.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Terry. Thank you, Zach. And I do believe we have our technology sorted. So I would like to reintroduce you to Tanet Salazar for our Legislative Pre-Session Report. Tanet, can you hear us? Now we're working on hearing you.
It's on her side.
Can you try again? Because it's, right, you folks say it's on your side.
How about now?
Perfect. Thank you.
And it would, if you can advance Dylan Pepper as well, since we're tag teaming the presentation today.
What was the name again?
Dylan Pepper.
Dylan, can you hear it?
Yep, I can hear you guys.
It's all yours.
Great. Well, thank you for having us today. The Joint Budget Committee is doing the Department of Higher Education budget briefing right now as we speak. So that is why we were not there in person. We're listening online to that briefing for you. But so I am Tanet Salazar, Dylan Pepper. We're your team that represents you down at the State Legislature. Been with you for a very long time and always happy to be with you another legislative session. We do have the 2024 session coming up. That begins on January tenth and will go for a hundred and ten days. We have a number of new members that have been appointed due to vacancies of other members either changing legislative chambers or leaving office entirely. Because of that, there has been a change to the committee makeups in both chambers from what we saw last year. Some margins have increased on committees, some margins have decreased. But the faces and names on legislative committees will be different for us moving forward this year. Joint Budget Committee will have one member that changes. Likely Representative Bakkenfeld from Arapahoe County will be replaced by Representative Taggart has been substituted in for him out of Grand Junction. The other standing committees related to education remain largely the same. We're going to have a, a typical theme in an election year where things are a little more contentious between the political parties. We also have a new emergence of a, of a political divide within the Democratic Party as well too, particularly in the House. We know that political parties are not a monolith and there is different shades of red and blue. And that is what is emerging in the legislature when you have a supermajority is a, a bit of dissension in the ranks, I would say, or a difference in opinion on different policies. And that was definitely evident during the special session that we just had a couple of weeks ago. I'm going to turn this over to Dylan to talk with you about special session and budget and funding. That has largely been the conversations this fall. We have not heard much out of the Department of Higher Education as far as an agenda. They've had a, a turnover in staff and are, and are a little slow to share what they may or may not be doing this session. So I'm going to turn it over to Dylan.
Thank you. So just wanted to start quickly with the, how the special session went. So after Prop HH failed in the November election and it failed roughly sixty to forty, that following Friday, Governor Polis convened, announced a special session dealing with property tax reductions. Ultimately, what the legislature passed is something I'd call like HH Lite. It removed the Tabor provisions that were in HH and largely left in both the residential rate reduction as well as the assessed value reductions. So on the property tax side, they reduced the rates from six point seven, six point seven, six five to six point seven. And then they increased the amount you get to take off the actual value of your single-family and multifamily property from fifteen thousand to fifty-five thousand. The cost to that is about two hundred million dollars to local governments. This will be backfilled through a hundred and forty-six million dollars in additional state funding for K-12 and then fifty-four million dollars to backfill all the other local governments. The way they did the backfill mechanism is if the county you are residing in grew at between zero and ten percent, you get a hundred percent backfill. If you grew between ten and fifteen percent, you get a ninety percent backfill. And if you experience assessed value growth more than fifteen percent, you don't get any backfill for these additional cuts. You remember two years ago, the state also passed Senate Bill 238, which was also a reduction of both the residential assessment rate and the assessed value. Those changes that were made in 238 as well as the 238 backfill mechanism remain largely, remain unchanged and remain completely intact. So the university will still get the backfill mechanism they would have received under 238. They won't get any additional backfill as a result of the legislation that was passed during the special session. The other two things we wanted to kind of highlight related to the special session is the Property Tax Task Force. This bill created the task force which must identify and consider and evaluate legislative options for property tax structures that protect owners from rising tax bills and is, is also sustainable for local governments and public schools. This task force for first meeting is a week from today and they are set to meet twice a month until March fifteenth, when they have to make recommendations to the legislature. I think they're, you know, everybody's pretty optimistic right now. I, I have some optimism that that'll change. And once they get into the nuts and bolts of this and how we really find a long-term sustainable solution to property taxes, it's going to be harder than they think. So we will follow that committee closely, given that's how some of your revenue is derived. And we will definitely update you as that, as that progresses. The other issue related to property taxes, which isn't directly related to the special session, is Initiative Fifty, which is a cap on property tax. It will be on the ballot in the 2024 election. And it, what it says is if voters approve, the measure would put a cap on how much total of property tax payments can increase in the state in a single year. This proposed cap will kick in whenever property tax revenues are expected to grow faster than four percent per year for the entire state. That's something that I think we need to keep an eye on. And I think moving forward, we're going to see more changes on the property tax side through ballot, measures and ballot initiatives and less through legislation and the legislature. So those were kind of the three issues related to property tax. You could stop here and take questions or we can keep going, whichever you guys prefer.
Any questions from the Board? From the tax piece? Dylan and Tanet, keep going.
The next issue we wanted to touch on was the Governor's Budget. So the total cost of this year's budget was about forty-three billion dollars. The general fund share is eighteen point four billion dollars. That's about a six percent increase over what we saw last year. And you're going to hear a lot of conversation, you know, in your community and through the media that, you know, the state just doesn't have the same money to invest as we've had in past years. And that's largely true. And the reason that's largely true is because we don't have the federal money that we once had. I mean, during, from essentially December of 2019 through the end of 2022, we got about eight billion dollars in federal funding. That money has largely been allocated and spent. And so the, the huge one-time money is gone and now they have to figure out how they're going to sustain and create, you know, long-term programs with the one-time investments they make. I bring that up for a couple of reasons. The biggest being that the state is facing about a billion-dollar budget shortfall in twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so the Budget Committee last year and this year has really prioritized kind of getting their spending under control and affording what they, you know, previously passed in legislation rather than new spending. So this year's Governor's Budget priorities include a plan to create more affordable housing, reduce the costs of healthcare, reducing crime through data-driven strategies, investing in schools and achieving a hundred percent renewable energy by 2040. What that looks like is a little different. And when we met with you guys last year, the Governor had submitted a thirty-five million dollar increase for higher education. This year, he submitted a total of a forty-two million dollar increase for higher education. And this includes thirty-three million for institutions. To give you guys kind of a scale of reference, last year's total amount invested was about a hundred and forty million. And higher education's institutions have met with the Joint Budget Committee over the summer and they are estimating they would need a hundred and ninety million dollars from state, additional state aid just to meet their core minimum cost. The Governor's proposal is pretty dramatically lower than what they, what the governing boards think they need. And it's, I just want to say that Ames will continue to get the average of the increase to all higher education governing boards. So as that number goes up and it's more money, I, I anticipate it'll go up pretty significantly past thirty-three million dollars. As that happens, Ames will continue to get the average of that increase. The Governor's also investing six point three million dollars into the Colorado Opportunity Scholarship Initiative. And then three million dollars for youth homeless, people who have experienced youth homelessness to attend college. Last year, he passed a bill that was the Foster G F Youth Scholarship, and this is meant to kind of grow and expand on that. Related to workforce development, and this is where we've really seen the Governor make and Governor's Office make a policy change, is rather than running some of these workforce and workforce development initiatives through the Department of Higher Education, he's largely he's largely running these through the Office of Economic Development and International Trade. So through that office, he's proposing $30 million in refundable tax credits to expand apprenticeship programs and $2 million to build apprenticeship programs out. This grant will support building new apprenticeships and the tax credit will help defray the cost of hiring these apprentices by providing a flat per apprentice amount back to the employer. He's also providing a half million dollars in support to align programs across the community college system and the Department of Labor. And this is going to be a consistent theme as we talk over the next six, 12, 18 months is how do we streamline? How do we find some consistency in our workforce development efforts? How does it become less siloed and how do we start having a more, you know, holistic discussion about the money that's being spent and invested? The results we're getting for that and how do we train the, you know, trade people for the job of the future? He's also going to do $7 million to extend the Advanced Industries Cash Fund and then $3 million for the Education Talent Mentorship Program. This is an ongoing effort and priority for the governor to expand and help get more educators into the pipeline. And I think that's really going to continue to be an important point as we've seen that even with massive investments, about $50 million, there still remains a significant teacher shortage and a significant shortage of new employees in almost every area that our state's economy needs. And so with that, that's, that's the highlight. That's where the governor wants to go. We'd open it up for any questions.
Any questions from the board? Tonette and Dylan, we do not have any questions here and thank you very much for your time this afternoon.
Great, thank you.
And continuing with the President's CEO report, I'd like to highlight for you, enjoy your attention in your board packet, as Dr. Woodson usually does, the, of her November meetings of note, there's a listing of different activities she has been involved in. And certainly she's, would be willing to provide any additional information for you should you have questions regarding those. And then the last item in the President's CEO report is typically, I'd like to invite any leaders in the room who have new team members they would like to introduce to join me up at the podium.
You want to be front and line? Just kidding. I would like to introduce Jordan Wagner. She's an Ames alum, nonprofit creator, worked with financial planning and is an embedded community member from the day she was born. Many of you may already know her. If you don't, you'll get to know her real quickly. I thought I had a full energy. She's got exponential energy. So you put 10 to the 10th power and that's going to become the foundation. Welcome, Jordan.
Chair Shah, members of the board, I'd like to introduce to you Dr. Teresa Cribelli. She joins us from University of Alabama, where she served 11 years as a tenured faculty member with a specialization in Latin American history. And she joins the Executive Vice President's Office as our Belonging, Justice, Equity, Diversity and Inclusion Program Manager and also has a great deal of experience with doing that work in her previous roles as well. And we look very much forward to her continuing that work at Ames for employees and our students. Welcome, Dr. Cribelli.
My pleasure to introduce James Allen as our new planning and drafting specialist. While James is not new to Ames, he's actually been here the last 12 years. He's new to our team. We are very excited and lucky to have him. Welcome, James.
Good afternoon. I have the honor to introduce you to Kevin Harris. He's our new Director of EMS overseeing EMT in the paramedics program, replacing Paula Fleur. He's a recent Colorado transplant from Kansas. He has 24 years of experience in EMS, 21 years as a paramedic, 18 years as a firefighter, and he has a beautiful bride of 22 years and four boys. So welcome to Ames.
Chair Shah, that concludes the President's CEO report.
Thank you and welcome, everyone. Okay, we're winding down. On this section, we just ask if you have any comments regarding Ames or future topics.
I would just comment that it was very pleasing for me to hear today that Ames will continue to be the tuition leader and fee leader in higher education for the state of Colorado. I think that it's been important for us to maintain that even though we haven't been able to continue while we were able, but I think it was a smart move on Chuck's part to increase our fees and our tuition a little bit so that students understand that we may need to increase it more in the future. But great job on the part of the administrative team and I just think it's notable that we've been able to be the tuition and fee leader for, what is it now, 12 years? Great job.
Sash B. Wendell. First off, I'd like to say welcome aboard to all the new employees and staff. We're glad to have you here. And once again, you know, I'm excited to work with John and Janine. It's going to be nice to have new people with a lot of experience already. And I'd just like to say I'm really proud of Ames for, you know, constantly keeping education at the forefront of what we do every day or what you all do every day. And the compassion you folks share to each other, let alone the students, is an amazing thing. I mean, compassion goes a long way and I think there's not enough of it these days. And I think Ames is, you know, rises above everything and is showing compassion. And then the influence that this, you are having on the community is just, I mean, it's really amazing. And the importance of what you all say and what you do is affecting the community, local and state. And I think you have a really good follow-through. You follow through with what you're saying and what you're doing and it's continuing. And it's really nice to be here for another four years.
I've been around education a long time and it's always amazing when you go into a school and you feel a safe and caring environment. And since the day I was elected, it didn't matter if it was trustees, if it was directors, students, staff, everybody has been absolutely gracious beyond words and I can't thank you enough to make me feel at home. It's always a great feeling and each of you should be proud the culture is here, that it's evident as soon as you walk in the door. And that's why our students are successful in everything that they do. And so to each of you, thank you very much. And, you know, to be here today to see a new building open. I've always said that Ames is a hidden gem and this is just more evidence of it as I walked around and said, wow, backwards the entire time. That's a joke. You're supposed to laugh. Diane, you're supposed to laugh at that one. Okay, all right, thanks. But I think it's really important that when you're at the grocery store or when you're leaning over your shrubbery in the backyard and trимinate, that you tell the story and people don't know the story. And I think that that's the only way that we make ourselves better is by us, we're the ambassadors to make this place even better. And so thank you very much and I wish you all happy holidays.
Thank you.
Well, I'm overwhelmed today. Let's just say that. You know, when you decide that you, well, might want to throw your hat into the ring and, and, you know, I did it because I knew Ames was a great place. But as I've gone through the orientation and a big thanks to Jerry for all that certainly he's done. But being here today really cements that for me because of the people. And the, the entire team. Seeing today this building, but everybody that I've met, just seeing the smiles on your faces and all of that. This is really about the people business. You know, it's about the students. It's about the people business. And the overwhelming part is not just that we're in this beautiful building, but it was the people that talked about it. And you realize the amount of work that went into it and dedication. And I just think of the word of excellence. I'm just overwhelmed by the amount of excellence that I've seen every day. You know, you can watch the videos, you can watch the board meetings on, at home on your computer. You can, you can do that. You can read everything on the website to try and prepare yourself. But it's about the people here and excellence is everywhere you turn. So it is an honor to be on this board, an absolute honor. And so in partnership, we're doing the best we can for the students.
Great, great comments. Thank you. And I would just echo, I think today's been another great day. Thank you to Lyle and Mark for their service. Excited with the new energy and what a better way to start on a board is in a opening of a new building. I think you said it well, is just the excitement of the great things that Ames is doing. And then Dr. Rothmer, thank you for stepping in for Dr. Bornstein. And Jerry, as usual, thank you for taking care of us and making sure we get kind of moving. And for me, where I'm fumbling and trying to figure out the new role. So and congratulations to the team, the Ames team. And I'll just make one more comment on the administrative group. You guys lead well and this will can help, will continue to help you continue to lead cohesively. So I think it's a great move. So thank you. With that, we have anything on our assessment where we have the questions and you can see them on your board book? Is there anything that you want to share about the meeting or any reflection on that?
I'll just add a comment about the teamwork of this administrative leadership group. It was commented on before, but I think it's really impressive how well you work together, communicate and organize what you present at these meetings. It's impressive how, how well it's thought through, how well it flows. You're a great team.
Thank you. I'd second those comments. Okay, if there's nothing else, I would ask for a motion to adjourn.
No move.
Second. Thank you. All those in favor?
All right.
Aye. With that, adjourn.